COVID-19 Public Meeting Procedures Notice. Due to the COVID-19 coronavirus crisis and in accordance with Governor Sununu, Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, the Henniker Board of Selectmen are authorized to meet electronically. The town of Henniker will be utilizing the Zoom platform for this electronic meeting. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen to the meeting, which was authorized pursuant to Governor Sununu's Order Number 12, which is also pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04. All members of the Board of Selectmen have the ability to communicate during this meeting through the Zoom platform, and the public has access to listen and, if necessary, participate in this meeting by following the link below. The link below can be accessed via henniker.org's front page or dialing the number below and entering the ID number at the prompt. For those who want to provide public testimony in the public hearing portion of the meeting, and you are connected to the Zoom website, you may click on the Raise Hand icon in the Attendees section of Zoom to make the request. When the time is appropriate, you will be recognized so you can provide your testimony. For those calling in who want to provide public testimony, dial *9 to alert the host you wish to speak. The host will unmute you at the appropriate time during the public hearing portion of the meeting. All participants, please keep your phones and computers on mute unless speaking. Again, any of those addresses, either the web, telephone, email, or any of the other ways to get ahold of the Town Administrator, Joe Devine, or Vice Chair Tia Hooper, those are all available on the front page of henniker.org. So, without further ado, we will jump onto item number one for the public hearing portion, and this is to discuss the merits of a renewal for a discretionary preservation easement for William and Victoria Goss, voted at 674 Liberty Hill Road, otherwise known as Lot 192-X. Who will be running point on this? Will this be Joe, or are we going to dive right into Mr. Goss?
I'm happy to give a quick scenario for you guys if you'd like, if that's the easiest way to do it.
Thank you.
So, back in 2010, Mr. Goss applied for a preservation easement for his barn, and that was approved by the Board of Selectmen on September 21st, 2010. They went through the procedures as far as looking to see why he would fit into these requirements, and they did find that he didn't meet the requirements. I have a letter that I sent the Board that's in the packet for this meeting from our assessor, also letting you know that it still meets the requirements and that the assessing department does feel that he qualifies or requalifies to receive this discretionary easement.
All right. Are there any further presentations from either Mr. Goss?
The only thing I got to offer is Lot 674, 675.
675, duly noted for the minutes.
Other than that, I guess I have got nothing other than my taxes on my barn went up 100%, and I don't know why, but I realize that's something to do with this meeting. It's something else I gotta take up with the tax assessor. I just don't understand why it went up 100%.
Taxes never go down, Billy.
I know they don't, but 100% is pretty radical.
I agree. I agree. Are there questions from the Board regarding the preservation easement? Mr. Osgood?
Yeah, there was a memo in there from Sidney Marston about the process for having these easements. I just wondered if, did you just how in-depth they are?
Well...
When this one was first approved, along with the other two that we did way back then, in each case, there was a lot of background assembled and presented. And I think at this point, we probably don't need to go through all that again, unless Joe has some of it there, because what we're talking about is just extending something that's been going on. I haven't seen any evidence. I don't know if anybody else has of the other two that we gave out coming back to us, but...
So, he went through all that rigmarole back in 2010?
Yeah.
And I did speak to legal counsel to see how in-depth we need to get, and they said we are just essentially recertifying it. We don't need to go into the same in-depth process that they took in 2010 when they granted the easement.
Sounds good. How old's the barn?
I don't know exactly. The house was built in 1776.
Yeah, so, Billy, I did some digging in on it in the Henniker-Cogswell-Henniker History Book, and it appears that the property was cleared in 1768. So, in between 1768 and the time of the construction that your building is dated back to would be when it originated. And it appears that it was actually owned by Samuel Wadsworth at one point, who was one of the original select board members.
I got a history of it. The original owner was a Patterson.
We don't, I don't have a Patterson in here.
Well, the history that I got from the owners, the immigrants, I've got a whole history of the building and when it was built. And he built a log cabin and a field first, and then built the house. And then his boy took the house over. And you're welcome to look at the book sometime if you want to, what I got for the history of it. It's quite, it's quite a bit of reading. It tells the whole history right up through to the immigrants had it and then when I bought it. But the original owners was Patterson according to what I've got. He come out of Lexington, Mass.
Yeah, so did this one.
Yeah.
Hey, further questions from the Board? I assume you need somebody to make a motion to approve this? Somebody want to do that? Peter, go ahead.
I move to approve the renewal for a discretionary preservation easement for William and Victoria Goss, 674 Liberty Hill Road, Lot 1-92-X.
Just a point of clarification, it's 675, I believe he said.
I'm sorry.
And I'll second it.
A motion made by Selectman Flynn, seconded by Selectman Hooper. Are we ready to call the vote or further discussion on this?
So, I just wondered, Billy, if you were the first one to do it, or did the immigrants try to make that effort?
No, I did it when it, well, actually, it had come out after I bought it. The state introduced it.
Oh, it was a new process? Good.
Yeah, and I was just wondering if maybe that 674 is the barn, because there's two different deeds to this.
Oh, yeah.
So, it might be 674. The barn side, I don't know. My house address is 675. I don't know what you go by, but it's a different deed to the barn across the road. There's two different deeds.
I would think we should use the barn deed number where it's needed at the barn.
Yeah. Call it 674 then. Yeah.
Is that what's on the tax bill, Bill?
I'm looking. Oh, where would it be?
It's filed under 100% increase.
Exactly.
It is 674.
It is 674?
Yep, I looked it up on the tax. Yep.
Yeah. See, that permits me to have two bills for a view tax, too, which is nice.
You're welcome. That comes with a little bow, too. All right, we have a motion by Selectman Flynn, seconded by Vice Chair Hooper. Any further discussion on it? Ready for a roll call vote? Chris, yes. Vice Chair Hooper?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Osgood?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Motion carries five-nothing. Go forth and preserve your barn.
All right, I only got one other thing to add, absolutely, but it don't pertain to this. But I think you got the right one when you got Leo. He's doing a heck of a job.
Nice to hear. Thank you very much. Appreciate the feedback.
He's doing a good job.
He's a good boy, ain't he?
Yeah, he is. He's doing a good job. It's nice to see things going frontwards instead of backwards.
There you go. Okay.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Joe, so, do we have a different address for the 615, or we just stay on this?
Nope, it's right on this one again, so we have two minutes before that meeting starts, looks like.
Very good. Thanks. We'll take a two-minute break, folks, and we'll restart at 615 on the dot.
Thank you, sir.
Well, it goes well with its back home. Maybe up some of the snowbanks up on the farmers, could be. Something like that. You want me to scrape that down to one of your barns this weekend? That little ridge you was talking about, we want to take that out there for you. If I could come down to you.
Yeah, let's see what we can get for the next couple of days. I'm having a hell of a time backing up up there because there's so much of that crunchy stuff. And I can't touch that.
You're gagging, so that's all right. Did you say Cordell is going to speak on item number two, correct? I want to make sure we get him in and out.
Yep, that is correct.
Okay, I have 615. Welcome back, everybody, to the Select Board meeting of Tuesday, January 15th. For those that are just arriving, we already did the Pledge of Allegiance. We had a public hearing at 6 o'clock. And I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve.
A second?
I'll second, but I have a question.
Okay, before we approve, you want to answer, ask your question?
Yeah, I see Stephanie Costello as Emergency Management Director. Didn't we take a separate vote, actually, and really, it shouldn't even be on the consent? She's already recorded under a vote from the other night. Not that it makes a difference, but I'm just pointing it out.
Joe?
Yeah, I mean, we could have, I wanted just the signatures from you guys, and I wasn't able to do that after the last vote, so for me, this is the easiest way to get signatures.
That's okay. No problem.
Got it. Okay, we have a, Tia, you made a motion, right?
Yeah.
Was there a second?
Not that I'm aware of.
Second.
Seconded by Peter. We'll do a roll call vote. Chris, yes. Tia?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Leon? Scott? Yeah, okay, good. All right, thank you very much. At this point in the evening, it is time for public commentary. If there's any members of the audience out there in Zoom land, please text or raise your hand or make some sort of signal on the video if you want to address the Board on any issues that are not here. Currently on the agenda, is there anybody that wishes to speak for public commentary? Tia, do you see anybody, or Joe?
Not that I'm seeing, no.
Give it a few more seconds for everybody to sync up. Okay, not hearing anything. I'll shut down the public commentary, and then we'll have an opportunity at the end of the meeting for public commentary if you wish to address the Board on this. First up is item number two, 2021 Town Meeting. Joe, you want to run point on this along with Cordell?
Yeah, you know, I'll let Cordell kind of take the lead here. Basically, the state has issued some guidance as far as 2021 Town Meeting, and so we're kind of just going to brief the Board to let you kind of know where the options are right now, so you have an idea of when March comes around, how we might want to proceed. And I'll let Cordell dive in a little bit more into it, but if you want it, there's an option to kind of do it like drive-in style remotely. But if you guys wanted to move forward that way, we would have to, there's a lot of steps that have to happen prior to, which is kind of why we need to discuss this at this point.
Okay, hello, everybody. Nice to see you all this evening. And there's no need to make any decision tonight, but I just thought and talked to Joe and thought we ought to have a discussion so that we can be able to plan how we're going to do things this year. Last year, as you recall, we had kind of a disaster. And we, basically, we ended up making a decision at the last minute to postpone the meeting. I think until about two days before that, no one had even thought about it because the coronavirus, although we knew it was coming, it suddenly got here with a vengeance, and the governor declared a state of emergency literally the day before the meeting. So, we ended up postponing it, which may or may not have been the right decision, but anyway, that's what we did and lived with the consequences. So, this year, we have more time to plan. So, I'll just talk about the options. Joe mentioned one option, which the legislature enacted last summer in response to all the towns and school districts that were having trouble holding their meetings. And this was a method that was first used by the Bow School District and then later by the Hopkinton School District, and maybe one or two towns and other school districts, I'm not sure. And I'll just say from the beginning, I do not like this option. And it's up to you, but I would encourage you not to adopt it. But it's referred to as House Bill 1129. And the basic process is you start with the Selectman having a virtual meeting where you would all go over the warrant and talk about all the articles on the warrant, and the public can attend remotely and listen to the discussion. And then after that meeting, the public is encouraged to send in their comments and potentially proposed amendments to the warrant articles if they want. And then the Selectman hold a second virtual meeting. And at that meeting, they discuss all the warrant articles, they discuss the comments they've received, and they can amend the warrant articles. And whatever they do, that is the final version of the warrant. And then, sometime after that, there is a drive-up ballot vote where all the voters come, they drive up in their cars, they're handed a written ballot. All the warrant articles are on that ballot, and they vote yes or no. There's no option to amend. It's just, it's an up or down vote on everything. And the first question that goes on the ballot is, do you approve of these procedures? And if the voters vote no, then everything that's on the ballot dies. So, that, I guess, is the biggest reason that I don't like this. It's far from the only reason, but it is the biggest reason. You do have, you do still have the option to hold a second meeting to adopt an operating budget, or you can just rely on last year's operating budget. But that would be the operating budget exclusive of any separate warrant articles. So, that, I think, is a total disaster. So, unless anyone wants to stop me and say, I think this is a good idea, or we should talk about it, I'll proceed to the other options.
I think that's, it's a bad idea. Like, our town meetings, you know, the whole part of it, and what makes it interesting is the dialogue between, you know, the public. So, please discuss the other options.
Peter?
Yeah, Cordell, Cordell, I'd like to ask a quick question, and I'm with you on the opinion of this. And I just want to ask you, when you said amend the budget, are the public allowed to amend it, or just the Selectmen?
Just the Selectmen.
Okay, and my other question is, is there any part of that bill that requires a mailing to every registered voter prior to that meeting?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I didn't mention that. Yeah, you have to.
One of the biggest reasons I'm against it.
Yeah.
It's gossipy, and it's crazy.
That's a couple of thousand dollars right there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Cordell, the other thing that I noticed in reading through that process, the drive-up voting could get kind of complex because you got to have a separate box for every bond issue as well as for the major items. It looked like you could have an awful lot of paper in the wrong place.
Yes. Well, no one seems to be very excited about this option, and I'm... That's fine with me. I'm glad of that. So, I'll proceed to talk about the other options. So, basically, as you all know, Town Meeting has two sessions. There's official ballot voting session, referred to as the election, and then there's the business session. The election by state law is set for the second Tuesday in March. We can postpone that if we need to. And because we're still in a state of emergency and the Attorney General's office has basically said that that constitutes a sufficient reason to postpone, we could decide to postpone that. Now, and again, well, actually, actually, that would be up to me. But I would, that's a moderator's decision, but I'd obviously want to discuss it with the Selectmen. We had an election in September, another one in November, and we were able to do that without, I think, that went pretty well. And unless we have a terrible surge between now and March 9th, I guess I expect that we probably can hold an election the same way we did in November, taking all the precautions we took. People can, people will be able to vote by absentee ballot if they want, and it'll be, you know, probably one quarter as many people voting as we had in November anyway. So, I'm assuming that we won't need to postpone that, but again, be happy to discuss that. And again, we don't need to make a decision tonight.
Yeah, Cordell, I just have a quick question. So, we have two Board members who have their terms that would be up for renewal come March. What would happen if, say, one decided not to rerun or one lost an election? What would happen, you know, because usually the transition happened after Town Meeting, and we end up postponing Town Meeting?
Well, are you talking about postponing the election?
Well, if, say, we moved forward with the election and something happened during that election where the Board was to change hands in March, technically, what would happen to that term?
Typically, again, they would stay in office until the close of the meeting, which means the second session. But there's, that gets a little bit complicated. I don't know whether we want to get into that tonight, but that could, that could be a complication if we postpone the second session. I mean, if we have the second session on Saturday, as we usually do, it's probably not an issue.
Or if we postpone the election part of it to make it correspond with that Town Meeting, that could work.
Yes. Yeah, certainly. Okay, so that's, I guess, the first question would be whether we want to postpone the election. And that's a decision, the actual postponement of it, that's a decision that, in theory, could be made up until the day of the election.
Now, what happens, because the school usually has their operating budget and whatever other expenditures voted during that time period, what would happen to theirs as well?
Well, we actually, we would have to consult with the school district moderator, which is easy enough, because that's me. And we'd also have to consult with the John Stark moderator and try to reach an agreement on whether to postpone that. And I will say that I'm talking with the superintendent and the John Stark's school district moderator on Thursday, so we can, at least, I don't know that we'll come up with a plan, but at least be in communication about that possibility. So, okay, so that's the election. And then there's the business session, which it's, I think, for about the last 15 years, 15 years or so, we've had that on a Saturday after the election. But that is, that's not set anywhere in state law. That is entirely at the discretion of the Selectmen. All the state law says is that the Selectmen shall choose another day for the second session. In theory, that could be in September. No one would ever do that, because you have to adopt your budget, and that's why towns always have that within a couple of days after their election. But you could decide now, we're going to have that second session in April or May, if you wanted to.
Well, and the governor also released the timeline for the potential vaccine rollouts and when those might impact each of us, and it looks like the last group is scheduled sometime in May or afterwards.
Right, and that's, you know, something you might want to take into consideration. I mean, I assume the big thing we want to consider is what's going to be the status of coronavirus and how bad is it going to be by the middle of March? And we'll know that better as we get closer. But you could decide at the outset that the second session is going to be, say, early April, late April, or something like that. Or you could set it as usual for that Saturday, which I think would be March 13th. And then we could wait and see, and if things still look bad on March 13th, we could postpone it.
I don't like, I don't want to say scheduling it for March and then postponing at the moment because of all the confusion and chaos it caused the last time. I think giving the voters or the legislative body the most notice on when we would be having that meeting would provide the best turnout.
Yep, that's...
I don't see any reason, I don't see any reason to delay it unless there's some reason technologically that we can't hold it, because as long as we have a process that's acceptable under the law and that can be managed by Cordell, what's wrong with doing it on that Saturday?
When you talk about technologically, I worry.
I don't think that's the good route or the greatest route to go at this point, right?
We relied on technology last year, and that didn't work so well. So, and I can talk in a few minutes about some options about exactly how to hold the meeting. But, so, one decision you're going to have, and obviously, you're going to have to decide at some point is, when are we going to schedule that second session? And as I say, you don't need to decide that tonight. You really only need to decide that, I guess, I think, when you post the warrant, which is like two weeks before the first session. So, it'll be the middle of February. So, you can wait a couple of weeks and decide when you want to schedule that second session. You know, if in a few weeks it looks like miraculously the coronavirus is going to be gone by March 1st, then, fine. I know, I'm just, if that happens.
Cordell, can you remind me of what the timeframe is of having to rehold some of these public hearings that were required to have? Um, Cordell, can you remind me of what the timeframe is of having to rehold some of these public hearings that we're required to have?
Yeah, I think the only thing that, um, the, the budget hearing has to be held at least 25 days before the meeting. But that is, when it, when that talks about the meeting, that's talking about the first session. So, uh, you have that 25, at least 25 days before March 9th, and then you're done. Even if you postpone, you don't need another budget hearing. If there's a bond, and I think there will be. That has to be held, I think it's between 15 and 60 days before the date that you're going to vote on it. So if you, if we plan to vote on it on March 13th and hold the bond hearing within that 15 to 60 day window, and then we end up postponing the business session, you may need to, depending on whether it now falls outside the window, you may need to have a second bond hearing, which we did last year. And it was just, you know, it was pro forma. Um, we had already had the hearing and no one had, I don't think anyone had anything more to say. So that, that is something that would, you'd have to look at when the time comes.
Explain to me why we would want to delay the second meeting?
I think just because of a lack of a viable format.
Well, that and you might not have, uh, you know, the voting population come out and that, that bond issue, I think is going to turn out a lot of people potentially. So.
I'd be in favor of what Tia was recommending to just push it to end of April or.
Like get even mid-May before the Memorial Day holiday. So it gives, you know, if they're scheduling these vaccines to be issued, you know, late April and then May for that last tier. Which is not, it's, you know, the vulnerable population or the elderly population will at least be taken care of, but the, the people who don't fit the, that criteria at least will have a couple of weeks opportunity to get vaccinated.
Peter.
So in other words, I'm hearing, um, some of you say that a live town meeting, traditional the Saturday after is out of the question. You couldn't work out that full gym to space people and, you know, use the protocol that's required?
Well, um, I, I, yeah, I was going to talk about that. You know, we're used to having that meeting in the cafeteria at the community school. Gym, I think is bigger. It provides more space.
It has more airflow.
Has more airflow. An alternative, a slightly higher tech option, but nothing like what we tried last year would be to have some people in the gym and some in the cafeteria. And you could have a microphone and speakers set up so, so that people can participate spaced out that way. Tia is shaking her head, so let me, uh, throw out another option. And these are just things to think about. I don't know whether there's a larger facility. Um, NEC may have uh, the hockey rink. I don't know. Um, I don't know how big that is.
Um, that, that fits a lot. I have, um, I can't remember the actual total number, but that was when you're, you know, right on top of each other. So we'd have to take into account the six foot distancing options.
But I, I have to assume that's bigger than anything at the community school.
Oh, yeah.
And then, and then a further option, um, and this might not be popular, but I'm just letting you know, uh, all the possibilities. You can have it in another town. If there's a, if, if you don't think there's a facility big enough in Hennecker.
Could we potentially have it outside? Like if it was later on in the springtime?
You could have it outside. My only, you know, my only concern about that is the logistics. Uh, we schedule it and there's a, and there's a, you know, a rainstorm or whatever, late littered. But certainly you can do it. And some towns did it last year, but they were doing it, I think in late June or July. And I suspect we, we prefer not to wait until June, uh, this, this year as we did last year. I guess those are the, and the other thing, and I hate, I hate to throw this in, uh, at the last minute, but the, and some of you may have read that the legislature is looking at passing a bill tomorrow. Uh, extremely fast track. That would give towns more options. But it, it, it wouldn't fundamentally change the options for us. It, it, it might make things a little bit easier, but we would still, even if that passes, we'd still have basically the same options. So those, that's where we are. As I say, you, uh, I think you need to decide by the middle of February, what date, dates, what dates you want to schedule it for.
Or no, we couldn't, uh, there's no provisions either in the bills that's being proposed for tomorrow or in, in our, in our quill, if you will, that allows for the temporary adoption of like Senate Bill 2, so that all financial matters could be voted on the day of the elections?
Oh, um, no.
No.
I was just trying to process that, but no, there's, there's no, no way to do that.
Not that I'm in favor of it. I just
Right.
throwing options out there.
Yep.
All right. Well, we got a little bit of time and some we can think. But I, I don't think it's realistic to hold a meeting mid-March.
Yeah, I don't either.
I still think getting into a room with a bunch of people with poor airflow is probably verboten. And, uh, I would be inclined to end of April, first part of May, when you can keep doors open and fans and all that stuff. So that's my two pennies.
Okay. Well, um, uh, if you want me to, uh, if you want me to come to a, a future meeting to talk about it more, I, uh, I don't have anything else to do most evenings. So I would be happy to, I'd be happy to do that.
Why don't we get, why don't we plan on an update mid-February? Would that give us enough time to make some maneuvering?
Well, there, there should be an update potentially tomorrow, right? Potentially.
Yeah. And if, if that, if that passes tomorrow, um, well, Joe will probably see it, but, uh, just remind me, Joe, uh, and I can send it to everybody. Just, and, uh, I'll be writing about it actually for the municipal association legislative bulletin this week, and I can send that summary to, to all of you.
Cordell, would it be a good idea if you joined us at our next select board meeting, just so we can make sure that we understand, you know, how things would work with whatever comes out of this potential legislation? To make sure that we, we know all our options.
If, yeah, if you want to put that on the agenda, I'd be happy to show up.
But you're not seeing a silver bullet in there for pulling this off, right? What's being standard about?
No, no, there's, there's nothing in there that would, that would, uh, that would give us better options than what we've talked about.
Got it.
I'll bet everybody that goes to, goes to the hearing gets vaccinated. There you go. That might get some people out.
There you go.
Line them up and get them on the way in or on the way out.
There you go.
Depends.
Maybe this was the year that we should have redone when our fiscal calendar actually occurred.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Johnston? Thank you, Cordell, as always, for a great update. Uh, we will move along.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Cordell.
Yep.
Thanks, Cordell.
All right. Moving along to item number three is the Route 114 crosswalks. Joe, are you going to run point on this or do I see Leo out there in the audience somewhere?
Uh, Leo is on the phone, so he'll be talking about this one for you guys.
All right. Leo.
Chris, members of the board, thank you for having me. First of all, I want to point out that in a previous depiction in the newspaper, it depicted that the town had some washouts from the previous storm. The town did not lose any roads. We were in good shape. Now that we got beyond that, let's talk about crosswalks. The state in New Hampshire is going, has got it in their workload for next year to pave 114 south from Post Office Place through town, uh, to Ware at some point. In previous conversations with them, they've identified that if they pave over my crosswalk at Post Office Place, that I am not to replace it unless I change and put in a, um, a lighted crosswalk. Uh, I've given you the information regarding the lighted crosswalk. It's roughly $8,300 plus or minus installation, which I then estimated up to about $11,000, $12,000. Um, from there, that's the first crosswalk. From there, they're going to go down, change the next crosswalk below the post, uh, below the firehouse, uh, which, uh, currently, uh, cuts a diagonal across the highway to limit the amount of exposure for people walking on that. They're going to bring it to a 90 degree, uh, crosswalk, which they will then, um, uh, suck up the cost for changing the, the approaches. Uh, the rest of the crosswalks through town are good until you get to College Convenience, which becomes a little bit of a particular point. Um, due to regulations, you can't have parking spaces that would encroach on the crosswalks, um, making visibility of the person crossing. Uh, so they would have to eliminate parking spaces. And in order to, um, knowing how short we are on parking spaces downtown already, they've moved to a, another option, which is to move the crosswalk right to the bridge and where there are no parking spaces. It would be a clear line of view of anybody crossing the road. Um, and then the last crosswalk in question is at Union Street. Once again, that's a diagonal crosswalk somewhat. I guess it's not. I guess it is just a straight crosswalk, but it doesn't cross to another sidewalk. It crosses to a street, which they feel is a problem. So they are going to move the crosswalk to the opposite side of the, um, of the Simon Center parking area and then cross it to the College Crosswalk, which actually is going to equate to the same thing because most of the people that use that are walking up Union Street anyways. But it'll actually attach to the College Crosswalk, which then also, um, uh, goes up the side of the road and to their buildings. Um, any questions so far?
You have any problem with any of those options?
No, not really. The, the only problem that you really see is the one at College Convenience and, and it, there are people that use it, but most people jump out of their cars and just jump across the road. Um, unfortunately, they won't have the convenience of actually walking to that crosswalk and using it. That's the only one, but I, I'm not, I don't think it, it, that it's worth losing two spaces, one on either side of the street in order to maintain the, the current, the current position.
I thought it was all good ideas.
I guess the only question I had is why is the first crosswalk flashed, but the other ones are not?
What, what, which one are you referring to?
Post Office.
Well, the speeds coming down off of, uh, 114 are extremely quick. In other words, uh, what they, what they put out, we, I received a letter from them two years ago, uh, depicting that that crosswalk is, first of all, it doesn't see, what they look at is they, they look at the amount of traffic on the crosswalk. It's not seeing more than 25 people an hour. And the speeds on that road average 35 miles an hour, even though it is a 30 mile an hour zone, people are coming down 114 and they haven't really started slowing down yet. So the state concerns themselves with, um, a crosswalk that is there, but people aren't really paying attention to it. So then they, they lay that as the groundwork that people won't pay attention to further crosswalks down the road. So unless the crosswalk's being used frequently, they, you know, most motorists don't typically see people on that crosswalk. I mean, there are quite a few people that use it. I mean, I have a sidewalk on either side and, um, there's a lot of people that walk that loop and, um, but unfortunately it's not 25 people an hour. So with the, between the lack of use and the, and the chronic speed on that, on that stretch of road, they feel that, that it's, that's a liability and that it will take away from other crosswalks further down. So, um, initially, when they paved, um, 114 down from Bradford, they were supposed to paint, they were supposed to cover that crosswalk and they didn't. So I immediately repainted it. But this time they said, we are going to pave over that crosswalk and you won't be able to repave it unless we come up with a compromise. And the compromise is the town's got to buy a, a rapid flash system for it. So people can come over and press the button. It'll start flashing. People will recognize that there's something going on as they're coming down across the bridge, that there's something going on in front of them. And, um, and somebody's about to cross the, cross the road.
Scott?
Yeah, I think another issue there is just the amount of traffic. You've got the highways still, you've got the restaurant, you've got the, you have the veteran areas, you've got the post office. That's a good place to not have a crosswalk.
Well, and then, then you add on to that. I mean, eventually with any luck at all, we may end up with a police station right there sometime. I'd, I'd like to think and, and, but you really need a crosswalk there. And because that accesses, I mean, I have people on Hall Street that would love to have a crosswalk up the side of the, uh, sidewalk up the side of their road, but that's not going to happen anytime soon. But, um, but it still gives people that ability to walk that loop. And like I said, I mean, the, the crosswalk from, from Edmunds back to the firehouse isn't the best one, but these are places that we can improve later on down the road. But at least maintaining and keeping a crosswalk there, I think is an important part of our infrastructure.
So you're, you're, to be clear, you're actually in favor of buying the flashing lights for that walkway?
I'm never in favor of buying something that, you know, that, you know, that's been there for years and hasn't been a problem, but I'm not in favor of giving up that crosswalk. I'm not, I don't want people to cross that street um, unprotected. And that's, that's what I'm in favor of is making sure the public's protected. So yes, I am in favor of spending that money on that flashing system.
Leo. Will you accept the motion?
Absolutely.
I move that we authorize the town administrator and the highway supervisor to move forward with the negotiation of the crosswalks we've discussed and with the installation of the rapid flash beacons in conjunction with the repaving of Route 114 by the state of New Hampshire.
I second.
I, it, Leon, just to be clear, I think that, I'm not sure if, I, I don't have that currently in my budget. So I, I, I was going to base it on a, um, a, uh, you know, and I don't know, we can also, obviously alter my budget, um, which would probably be probably more efficient than to put it as a warrant article. Because if I, if I, if I agree with the state now, then I'm moving forward on it no matter what. And then that's basically what I'm after is I have a, I have a outstanding line right now with the state of New Hampshire. They want it, they want an answer from the Board of Selectmen that, that we're, that we're in favor of moving forward on this. And, and so we can, I can talk with Joe and, and we can bury it, we can, we can add it to my budget. Or we can put it up to warrant, whatever your favor is.
I, I think it should be incorporated into the operating budget under the highway and street line.
We could find 11,000 in there. I'm not too worried about it. Okay. We have a motion by Selectman Parker, seconded by Vice Chair Hooper. Further discussion on the motion.
Yeah, you know, the fact that it would be lighted and, um, and flashing, I think would probably create a lot of safety too with people doing that.
Um, Scott, just to be clear, it won't be lighted, but it will be a rapid flash system. I don't, I don't believe that it'll actually add any, you know, overhead lighting on it, but it'll be a rapid flash system where somebody will be alerted to the fact that there's something in front of them going across.
Wasn't one of these supposed to be installed down by NEC as well?
I think that at one point in time, it was part of a, um, a program that the, um, they were working with NEC, but uh, I think it was, I'm not sure. they were working with NEC, but, uh, I think it was, I'm not sure if it was the, um, one of the committees, the, um, um,
It was economic development.
Yeah, maybe economic development that they were thinking about it. Um, that was going to be on a, I do believe on a Union Street crossing because that Union Street crossing is kind of a little bit blind, you know, if you're not paying attention. That's, I think that's more so where most of the accidents occurs, right there by the Union Street crossing. And I, I don't think it's not so much at the, uh, at the, uh, the dining hall crossing, but, um, that Union Street crossing is kind of a little bit on a bend, but, um,
Yeah, I know Mark Fugier was trying to assist them with that, that project. I don't know where that ended up.
I act, I actually just forwarded all this information to them so they'd be aware of what's going on 114 to see if they'd be interested in partnering and having them pay for the Union Streets one, um, but to have that installed at the same time of the repaving.
I know that when we met with President Perkins a couple of years back, this was pre-pandemic, she was going to fold the cost of getting one of these into her operating budget, uh, and to do either the Union Street or the dining hall area. I don't know. Obviously the pandemic messed up everything, but you may want to reach out to her before she sets her next budget.
Yeah, and that should be in February.
That's a good place to have that flasher too.
I know we put some pencil lights up in there, I think, to kind of give a little bit more, uh, Leo, right? We put some pencil lights on some of those crossings?
I did put, I put a, I put a, um, I put a beam light on one of them to help in, increase the amount of light on that. Um, and I guess that, you know, I, I think I was talking with the school today about that and I think it'd be a tou, it's a tough one, you know, for the rapid flash, uh, but I, I, I think it, I, I, you know, honestly, it, it will probably work. Most kids won't press the button, they'll just cross the road, but, you know, some of them will, will, will actually activate it. Um, they're all solar powered. Um, those ones might be a little bit tougher. They gotta make sure, if they're being used a lot, it's, it's gotta make sure it's got a, uh, clear line of sight to a certain degree in the sky to make sure they're getting adequate, um, adequate solar to recharge the batteries. In fact, that was one of the, uh, one of the questions right away with the company, one of the companies I was dealing with, because he, he immediately brought it up on Google Earth and he saw, oh wow, geez, you've got these big grove of pine trees right there. I said, well, that'll eventually go, but I said, and he says, well, then, then when he said, then he asked the next question, how many people are going to be crossing it? And he says, oh, you know, when I said, well, you know, and I'm not getting twenty-five people an hour right now. And he says, oh, well, in that case, it's not a problem because it's not going to be used that frequently. So the battery will, will, will certainly be able to handle, you know, it, you know, will be able to recharge itself. It's not like it's three hundred and fifty people a day crossing. So in that, in that Union Street crossing, that's one of the things they have to look at is they gotta make sure that they have a clear line of sight for the, uh, for the solar recharge.
Got it. Do you, do you think there's any chance, uh, on an unrelated subject, but sort of addressed to it, that they could formalize the sidewalk between, uh, town hall in front of the library there where it kind of just bleeds onto the pavement before they pave?
Um, no, that would, that I think, um, would end up being a sidewalk project, which I, I was, I've been talking to Joe, they, you know, I, I know you probably don't have a lot of tolerance to getting into another TAP program, but, um, I'd like to get, I'd like to start the paperwork and maybe go for another grant for more sidewalks. I mean, what we've done so far is unbelievably nice, especially if you're in a sidewalk tractor. But, um, um, you know, some of the areas that need to be addressed is obviously that one, 114, not only south but north, you know, from the, from the, um, from, um, Prospect Street up past the firehouse. I'd love to see, you know, those ones could use some help and then that one along, um, we only got a few more sections to do and it's Rush Road and they're all abutting a state road. Rush Road, um, 114 from the, across from the library, as you said, and then up but from the, from, from Prospect past the firehouse to, uh, complete a really nice loop. But, um, I mean, the improvements we made out on Western Ave, Hall Ave, the upper Prospect Street is, is phenomenal as far as ma- maintenance wise. Um, we're, we're staying on top of them and make sure they stay clean. But I, I certainly understand, you know, the, the raised, the raised curb operation and then, you know, uh, with some curbing on it to help, um, identify the walkway to the road is, 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 is key. Uh, we also have, um, uh, a few concerned citizens talking about, um, the crosswalk up in Hillside Drive as well. Eventually, uh, when we get into rebuilding that road, we'll probably re-rebuild that sidewalk too.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I think we had a motion and a second on the floor. Why don't we deal with that? And then if we want to go on to sidewalks, that's a, another issue we can talk about.
Fair point. We have a motion made by Selectman Parker, seconded by Vice Chair Hooper. Ready to call the vote, roll call vote on it? Chris, yes, Vice Chair Hooper?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Leon? Scott?
Yes.
Motion carries five, nothing. Is there anything else for the road agent while he is here? Other than to get that sidewalk built by the library?
I will, it's on, it's definitely on my radar and I appreciate your time. And if you don't mind, I'm going to sign off for the night. Have a good evening.
Have a good night.
Yes.
Guys, the great, the crew is doing a great job with the roads. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your support.
Okay, thank you for Peter for parlaying that conversation. Uh, next up is item number four, ambulance bid. I see Chief Alcoin is in the woods in the Zoom room there. Uh, Chief, will you be running point on this or Joe?
I'm happy to answer the questions you have, but can everyone hear me?
We can hear you.
Great. Um, I think it's pretty, um, self-explanatory from what you see there. Um, we put it out to bid and we only received one bid back, which I'm actually disappointed about. I had two or three different parties tell me they were going to submit bids, but I did not see any come back except from this one party. My recommendation is that you accept the bid. It's not the ideal situation, but it wasn't an ideal situation having the motor go in the truck either. So, um, exploring the options and, and I think that this is probably one of the better options you're going to see if we'll put it back out. I don't know that we'd see much more money come back from it.
Yeah, I'll make the motion to accept the bid in the amount of two thousand one hundred and twenty-three dollars.
Seconded motion.
Second.
Seconded by Selectman Parker. Discussion on the motion.
It's going down to Missouri?
Uh, was it Missouri and Michigan? I, I know how that.
Southland, MI. Wow.
Uh, Chief, does this, uh, getting such little dollars back, is this going to affect the new ambulances at all?
No, there's no effect on the new ambulance. We, we went over the bid again and with the manufacturer and it wasn't going to put us over costs at all. So there's no effect on the new ambulance that's still on a schedule to come back in the middle ten of February.
Okay, and just for the sake of the audience, we still have, we have the loader rig, so we're still at full strength for ambulance service, correct?
Correct, yep. And we will continue to have the loader until our new ambulance is in service.
Great, thank you. Uh, further discussion on the mo, Peter?
Yeah, just a, a quick question, uh, for the chief. Chief, and I may have missed this somewhere along the line, but how did you, um, put this out to bid? What method did you use?
Uh, Joe helped me list it on the town website. Um, we notified the people that were supposed to be bidding on it, but actually, um, I was surprised to get this bid from somebody out of town, so I'm not sure exactly how he found it. He must've been looking for it, so.
Okay. Great, how many miles were on it?
Uh, there's just under a hundred thousand miles on that rig.
Yeah.
Hey, I believe, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, we had a motion by Selectman Hooper, seconded by Mr. Parker. Further discussion on it? Roll call vote, Chris, yes?
Yeah, yes.
Yes, Peter?
Yes.
Leon?
Yes.
Scott Osgood?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much, Chief. Guys are doing great work as always.
Appreciate it.
Uh, when did you say the new ambulance was coming?
February.
February, got it. All right, uh, item number five, uh, is Lieutenant Mike Martin's firearm. Joe?
So, um, the police chief, uh, Chief French asked me to bring this up to the board. Um, I guess it's been a tradition of the department, uh, to give the firearm to the retiring officers. Um, the Hennecker Police Association has already voted to purchase a new rubber to replace the gun that they're looking to give to Lieutenant Martin, uh, for his retirement. Um, so I'm just looking for the board to authorize the, uh, the gift and then the, for the purchase.
So moved.
So moved. We have a motion by Selectman Peter. Is there a second to the motion? Seconded by Selectman Parker. Further discussion on the motion? Roll call vote? Chris, yes?
Tia, yes.
Peter?
Tia, yes.
Leon?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Motion carries five, nothing. Thank you very much. Um, it was wonderful to see on Circle Street, the nice outship pouring for, uh, support from Mr., for Officer Martin's retirement. So, uh, appreciate everybody coming out for that. Uh, he's a good one. We're going to miss him terribly. Uh, item number six is driveway access for wastewater. Will Joe you on this or?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take this one. Um, so Superintendent Levecq has approached me about the possibility of drive, uh, creating driveway access off of Water Street. Um, right now he has about four or five manholes that he can't get to, and one of those actually contains, um, one of the siphons that we need to clear out. Um, no machinery can get into these manholes. So in the event we ever had a failure, um, we wouldn't be able to properly maintain them. So what he's looking to do is to have the driveway access, um, go along Water Street so that machinery can get in in the event we need to clean or siphon or clear obstructions, troubleshoot or anything like that. Um, right now, we're just looking for the board to let us, uh, move forward with the Army Corps of Engineers, which most of the land is, um, to make sure that we can get easements to move forward with it. And there is, I believe, two houses along, uh, Cressy Street that may be impacted as well, as far as an easement goes. So we're looking to start the process just to look at that. Um, and then after that, um, the road agent has offered to complete the work to help do it. Um, he would bill wastewater. Um, at that time, we'd get a quote from the road agent to move forward. But right now, we're just really looking for the board's approval to start the process with the Army Corps and to try to obtain these easements that are going to be necessary for the access.
Yeah, I'll make the motion to, um, authorize the town administrator on behalf of a Hennecker wastewater, um, to seek permission and to reach out to the affected properties and seek approval for the easements as discussed.
Second.
Motion made by Vice Chair Hooper, seconded by Selectman Parker. Further discussion, is this basically following the footpath on, uh, that comes over from Ramsdale to Water Street?
I believe so, yes.
Is it a class six?
It, there's nothing there right now. It's woods.
It's just a path.
It's just a path.
There's, there's a logging road though.
Not, I, nothing that we can get equipment down and that's the issue.
Is that the section of pipe, Joe, that's plugged?
It is the section that's plugged, yep.
There's, there's a diagram on the backup if you have it in front of you folks.
No, I got it, but, um, I'm looking where they want to build a road and I thought there was already a logging road there.
I believe there is some access for foot, but again, I don't, we can't get any machinery down there. We weren't able to get the trucks down there to complete the siphons that they were looking to do on it is the issue.
And it's grown up the branch where it, it used to be an open road you could go down, but it's, it's, it's no longer that easy to do it.
No, I agree. Uh, the only reason why I was asking is, and I'm in favor of doing it, I just, uh, I'm, I know that that's a popular walking route. Did we want to kind of do something with the Trails Committee on that to kind of make it maybe a special road or something like that without too, too much fanfare?
Well.
If it's, if it's the road that I'm thinking about, I walk it quite a bit and it, it's a nice walk through the woods. And if they're going to turn it into a road, do we want to just get a little input from the Trails Committee? Cause I know that that's one of the, again, I'm assuming what the diagram is showing is that path, so. It'd be a nice, it'd be a nice improvement to downtown is what I'm getting at.
Yeah, well, let's get the easements and permission from the landowners first and see what we're getting involved in, because, you know, depending on what the repair looks like and everything else, it could be a large cost.
And I think it's a good idea to see what we can do to make it a nice walking trail as well.
Yeah, it's a, it's a nice stretch of road right through there, so, yeah.
Well, let's initiate the process, whatever proper motion it would be.
Well, well, my only concern on that is if, if we're going to then start building trails off of it, this is coming out of, the wastewater department is being billed and that's coming off of wastewater users.
Army Corps is going to, going to make the rules anyway.
Yeah, but I'm talking about the operating budget expenses.
All right.
As far as the money goes, the plan would, would probably be to have Leo draft a quote and then bill wastewater because of separate accounts, um, to fund this, um, the road. I think that's what Tia is getting to.
Yeah, I know, I just, uh, it's a popular walking route. I've said it and.
But, but it should not be constructed just because, you know, the wastewater users are picking up the tab. I think that's really unfair.
No, I get that. I'm just, it should be in the back of the mind for any sort of design or construction that goes through there, because if it's, again, if it's the, I hadn't seen, I've tried to find the path that was, there was no flagging down there for me to look at. So when I walked it, I was like, this is, if it's the path that I'm thinking it is, it would be a nice walking path. That's all I'm saying. Uh, so we have.
It used to be a nice, nice road, uh, dirt road, because that was most of them along the river and, and, uh, it was open.
Yeah. I, I couldn't find a manhole, so maybe I'm not, maybe I wasn't on the right path, but I was kind of surprised that they couldn't get a piece of machinery in there because it's a pretty wide logging road. But anyway, that's neither here nor there. But just, Joe, if you want to make a mental note in the back of your mind when they talk about design and all that stuff. So we have a motion by, help my memory, I can't remember, it was made by Selectman Hooper? Tia, was it you?
Yeah.
Seconded by Leon?
Yep.
All right, further discussion on the motion? Roll call vote? Chris, yes? Tia?
Yes.
Tia, yes.
Leon?
Yes.
Last but not least, Mr. Osgood?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you very much. All right, that concludes the new business section of the meeting. Now on to old business. Uh, this is item seven, second reading of the holiday hours. Joe, you want to, for the sake of the audience and bring everybody up to speed? And if you could also draw a distinction if this also dovetails into the overall discussion of paid time off and all that stuff?
Sure, so again, we, uh, I brought this up at the last meeting. Um, the transfer station, uh, the way they used to be, uh, be able to handle holiday hours is they could bank them and essentially they had a separate, um, leave bank for holiday hours. Um, the board, obviously we're looking to move away from that. We don't want to allow them to have that separate, uh, banking. So currently on our personnel policy, we already allow police officers, um, basically to get holiday checks where they're paid every six months, all the holidays that they worked. Um, so what I'm looking to do is add in that same line to the personnel policy, which is, um, where is it? Section, oh, and then they may, section four. Uh, I would like it to, rather than just saying police officers, um, they say, police officers and transfer station employees that are required to work the regular hours regardless of any holiday which may occur during the work week, they're compensated for holidays at the rate of straight time, receive the accumulated holiday pay in a lump sum every six months, July and December. Um, so that's what we're looking to do. So this way that, um, we don't have the banking of holidays anymore and then the transfer station is still paid. In the event that the holiday falls on a day that they were scheduled, um, to work, um, they would use either vacation time or comp time to make their check whole for that particular week. And again, then they would still get paid out at the, um, six months mark, July or December.
All right, so does this issue have to do with, uh, using up vacation time as well?
Um, I mean, not, yes and no. I mean, they'd be using vacation time, um, to cover their hours, but it's a separate issue that we've run into with this holiday hour banking that was occurring for, from what I understand, for years and years. They were allowed to basically work the holiday or bank that time and save it just as vacation time. The board voted at the last meeting to pay out all the vacation hours so that we no longer have any vacation hours for the transfer station employees on the books, which we've done. But moving forward, this is how we can allow, allow them to get paid for their holiday without having to allow them to carry this large accrual.
Yeah, but Joe, we, we can't, like, we close the transfer station if the town hall's not open, right? For major holidays, like, there's no reason why the transfer station employee should technically be working a holiday unless it's approved and it's an emergency.
Well, and then they're not working it, but they still get the holiday time. And if they were working, it's, it's, to use an example, if the holiday falls on a Thursday and they work Monday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, let's just say, they've already got their 40 hours, that holiday time would then be overtime. So this allows us not to pay them the overtime. So they still get their 40 hours, that holiday just gets essentially put into that bank and every six months it pays out, just like we do with the police department. If the holiday falls on a Thursday and they were supposed to work, they, the holiday still goes into that bank and they have to use time. Either they get paid for 32 hours or they have to use eight hours of vacation time to compensate to give themselves hold for that week.
So what was the issue? And I'm, I'm going to admit, I didn't have laser focus on this issue. So if I, if I'm redundant here or if I'm repeating steps, I apologize to the board and the audience in advance. What was, what was the issue regarding the memo that went out that was informing employees they needed to use up time?
So, so back in, I believe it was, I believe it was this, the November meeting, I gave you a report about people who are sitting at with a, a large amount of accrual of vacation time. Per our policy, they're not allowed to hold more than basically whatever they're allowed to accrue. So if they can have 120 hours, they're not allowed to hold more than 120 hours on their anniversary date. So that's the max they can hold. The board gave me the directive to send them letters to let them know about this policy, which is what I've done. I've sent every employee that is currently sitting over, informing them that we have this policy on the books. I didn't say, you know, nobody is in within, the policy says that we have to notify them in six weeks or 60 days. We have nobody in that situation yet. So the, the letter that was sent was just a generic letting them know this policy and that the people who got it are already in the overage category right now.
Right. And if you look at the employees in the overage categories, those are, I call them essential personnel. Those are law enforcement who, right now we're short staffed and then also highway department. And this is the busiest, you know, summer's busy, but this is like really busy for them this winter. So, you know, we can't have them taking vacation right now.
And I, and I don't disagree. I was just, the board asked me to send the letters to everybody, which is what we've done. You know, if for some reason, if, and I've told every single person who's come to me about this, if they feel that they can't use it because of, let's use the police department as an example, because of short staff, I told them to talk to the board, give me a memo. We come before the board and the board can authorize them either to carry it, pay it, however the board wants to handle that. But it'll be a case by case basis.
Okay. I've since, I've had a conversation with a couple of people in town here about that particular memo. And they feel that the notice was a little bit on the short side and I, I tend to not, I tend to agree with them regarding this issue. There are a lot of callouts for staff for quarantining and COVID coverage. And they were basically asking if this memo could be extended in terms of its timeline for using up this time. And I just, I'm floating that behind the board and I know it's a little bit mixed in with this holiday issue, but I, I, I promised that I would bring it forward to the board after having some conversation. These are respected opinions in town. And I, you know, I, I heard both sides of the discussion, so.
I think we're going to have to look at each employee by, on a case by case basis, Chris, and the number of hours that they have, you know, listed and what, what's actually occurring in their department to make those decisions. Because some, some departments are going to function differently than others right now.
Yeah, and I, I understand that. And I'd be willing to make an exception for, you know, public, public safety such as police, fire, rescue.
Highway.
Highway. I mean, you know, unfortunately, it's just about, not unfortunately, but it's just about every employee falls into that category except for just a handful.
So just so you're aware, so 10 employees are the ones who received the memo, letting them know that they were in current overage. Three are from the police department, one is from highway, one is from transfer, two from wastewater and three from fire rescue. So.
I would just plead with the board, let's make sure we don't balance this on the back of the employees and, and, you know, we.
Well, and, and that's why, you know, right now we got to get through this next budget hurdle before I think we really pick up the PTO conversation. But the PTO, you know, switching that over, and I know there's going to be some heartburn from potentially some long-term employees. We just have to do it strategically, but I think it would really benefit the employees, especially with these vacation accrual overages and also the accounting of it. And I think overall it would reduce our liability on the books.
Okay. But bottom line, Joe, as you're saying, there is a mechanism for them to come petition the board to make sure that they don't get the short end of the stick.
Per the policy, they have the right to come to the board. And I did say that in the memo, they can come to the board and ask you guys either for an extension or to buy, we can, we can pay it out too. So they have that choice, either one.
Okay. I, I, I agree that we should, you know, policies are, you know, Peter is all about policy and, you know, we have a policy, we're trying to enforce it, but we didn't enforce it. So we have this transition zone and we got to make sure that it's fair and equitable for everybody involved, so.
Well, we, we had this happen before when we were transitioning with the highway department superintendent, where we had one employee who had a, a large overage because he was unable to take vacation. And we did resolve that, but that was another, you know, he was required to come before us before we made those decisions so we could talk to him.
I think there's an opening, Chris, that I hope you are comfortable with. And I, I, I think that any, all these individuals that might have a special case that's different than the next guy or lady, I think that Joe, through Joe, coming to us, we'd give them the opportunity to, you know, explain to us what their situation is and we can make a decision. I hate to use the word case by case, but I think that's pretty much what I'm saying.
Okay.
Right, and.
I said that I would bring it forward tonight and I had a very good conversation with a couple of individuals regarding this policy change. And they brought up very good points and.
Well, and I know people, you know, departments are stretched thin right now and some are short staffed, but we really need to advocate for employees to take vacation time so there's not burnout.
I, I 100% agree with that as well. I think what they were just trying to do is maybe lengthen out that window.
Well, and I, I think the other part of, I guess, probably their response is they haven't been getting their vacation accrual on a regular weekly or bi-weekly basis. This is, you know, it's coming haphazardly and we really need to get that resolved.
Got it. All right. So, Joe, how does that tie into this holiday thing, this section?
Well, this, this holiday piece is, is separate. The transfer station is the only department that has, that's been banking these holidays. And we're looking to get away from that so that they don't have another accrual and we're looking to pay it out just like we do the police department. So that's why we, you know, in my report, you know, I'm just looking to add transfer stations employees with the police department in that language of addendum A, section four.
So moved.
Okay. Again, plead ignorance. The change of policy goes from what to what?
What's it going to and from?
What's it, what was it now? What's it going to?
Well, there was no real policy to bank these holiday hours. So there, there wasn't a real policy in place.
Yeah, they were using a specific sentence within a paragraph and certain individuals interpreted that as being able to swap one of their regular days that they were going to work to work a holiday, which then puts us in a situation where we need to either, you know, they were getting their day off, but when it comes to paying that out, we are now having to pay them out time and a half, which was not the intent of the board when they established the policy, how many years ago, Joe?
Oh, a long time.
Over 10. So it, you know, it, it really needs to be cleaned up and I think that's what Joe's trying to do here. And, you know, we start looking at the overall, you know, time off package and what we want to do, then we can discuss it further. But I think in the meantime, I think we need to move forward and adopt this so we can fix this issue to make sure that this doesn't happen again.
Great. Okay. So it was moved, but go ahead, Joe.
No, I was just gonna say, so, so basically we're, we're, we're amending that one section that I quoted, the section, addendum A, section four. Before it said, police officers are required to work the regular. I'm looking just at police officers and transfer station employees. So that's, that's the change to the policy. It's just adding transfer station employees with the police department.
Simple enough.
Very good. I don't, we have a motion by Selectman Flynn. Is there a second to that? Seconded by Selectman Osgood. Roll, further discussion. Roll call vote. Chris, yes.
Yeah, yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Leon?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Motion carries five, nothing. All right. Item number eight. Acceptance of Board of Selectmen Minutes, non-public, December 15th. I make a motion to approve?
I'll second.
Motion made by Selectman Blombach, seconded by Selectman Hooper. Roll call vote, yes?
Yes.
Yes, Leon? Scott? Okay. Item number nine, acceptance of Board of Public Minutes of December 15th. Any changes? This is page 44.
Um, for item one, if we can just clarify what that first motion is, so making the motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
And the other edits to the public minutes of December 15th.
Item seven just has a little typo. Second paragraph, the unserved funds.
Yeah, and on page 47, there's a motion at the top of the page, but it doesn't say what the outcome of that motion was.
That was five, nothing, wasn't it?
I thought so.
Yep. Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve with the following edits.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion made by Leon, seconded by Tia. Roll call vote, all those in favor.
Tia, yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Leon? Scott?
Yes.
All right. Motion carries. Next up on the agenda is item 10, Town Administrator Report. Joe?
So just some quick updates for everybody. Quick COVID-19 update. As of December 30th, we had eight active cases, which is 0.16% of the population. Had 15 new cases in the past 14 days and a total of 123 cumulative cases, which is 2.5% of the population. We've had 2,916 people be tested, which is 59% of the population. Our positivity rate actually dropped below a measurable number, so they're not reporting it as of right now on the state website.
Joe, when you say 2,916 have been tested, how many of those are people that have been tested more than once?
It does not distinguish how many people have been tested more than once and it doesn't distinguish how many of those tests is from the college as well. That's just the total test that people put down Hennecker as a residence.
So do we have how many active cases?
As of the, this, so it's kind of confusing. So if you watch, if you watch what WMUR puts out, we'll use them as an example. You see this, we'll use on the December 30th, they would have been reporting eight cases. DHHS, the report that they send the, the town, which they specifically send to the police department, emergency management, fire department, actually shows us around 20 cases because it includes the antigen tests. And the antigen tests are not included on the tests that are being reported at WMUR.
Is that the quickie one?
That is the quickie one, correct. That's the rapid test. So you kind of, it, it's kind of deceiving to know which is actually the correct number. Because the antigens do have a false positive rate of about 16 to 17%. And there, with the false positivity, they're still reporting it and they're telling people to quarantine, but there couldn't, you know, the results aren't exactly the most accurate at all times, which is why when they report WMUR and to the states reporting out that information, they don't include it. But they want law enforcement to be aware of these residents when they're coming in contact with the people, that there is a possibility that they be COVID positive. So that's kind of the difference between the two numbers, which can get kind of confusing, but that's, so we're eight, between eight and 20, depending on the rapid test and what actually is being positive. So.
Got it. Thank you.
Sure. The Riverfront Parking Lot. So we've been having some issues with the Riverfront Parking Lot.
Which side? The colleges or?
Daniels.
Daniels.
Well, the, the entire lot. I'm, I'm going to save the Frank Chen's property, the Daniels Restaurant and then the colleges. The issue is coming up right now. One, obviously we plow, we maintain it per the agreement that the town got into with the Henneker Business Association, I believe is what they called themselves at the time.
Civic Association.
Civic Association. Thank you, Peter. But the issue we're running into right now is specifically regarding the sticker, who's supposed to get stickers down there? And so we've done some complaints about it because one of the properties received more stickers than they were supposed to. So we're, we're kind of cleaning this all up. I wanted, just sort of, I wanted to update the board. One of the things we're really looking to do is we're going to probably change the stickers to a color system so that police know who has a valid sticker and who doesn't have a valid sticker. Right now it's just a generic sticker that goes on to the vehicle and it sits there. Also, the landlord is supposed to be reaching out to the police department to say, this is why I approved to have a sticker. Right now that isn't happening. The residents just come in, get stickers and the police department says, oh, you, okay, here you go and we issue it. And speaking to the, some of the property owners down there, the reason behind these stickers is primarily for our zoning ordinance because these residents need to be able to have parking. And per our zoning, you have to have so many parking spots per a unit. So the number of stickers that they have is correlated to the number of apartments that are in the building, if that makes sense to everybody. So.
Joe, why are we not, instead of stickers, why are we not like, you know, the window mirror tags that people can hang and then they get them when they move in and they got to turn them in when they give them back? And it has, the landlord can manage that.
And we can do that too. That's a great idea. I mean, we just, that was just, the stickers are what we've always used. So that's, that's a wonderful idea. But again, it's, it's, people are getting stickers that aren't supposed to have stickers is what it really comes down to. And we have extra stickers and where each building is a lot of so many spaces, that's where we're running into issues is the old people are parking in front of other buildings and that's upsetting the other property owners. You know, the other issue we're running into is one of the parking spots that is related to Frank's building has a dumpster in it. So the other properties feel like they, that's one of their stickers. If they want to put a dumpster in the parking spot, they shouldn't, if they're supposed to have nine, they should only have eight now because they're using it up. So the police chief and I are working with this, just kind of going through it, but I want to make the board aware this is kind of what's transpiring down at the Riverfront Parking Lot.
Yeah, it, it seems like a lot, especially since the police department is already short staffed to be managing the oversight of this parking situation. We, we really need to throw it back on the landlords and say, here are your parking passes, you're responsible for them.
Yeah, like I said, I think that's a great idea with the, the hangers for the mirrors. You know, if, if Frank Chen gets nine, he gets his nine, who he gives them to is who he gives them to. But the concern we're running into is, and it specifically came up with one of the businesses down there, is they had a sticker and by giving them a sticker, you're taking one of the apartments away. And again, he needs those parking spots for zoning as well, because each unit is required to have so many parking spots per our zoning. So the idea, I believe, behind overnight parking stickers was not for businesses, it was for the actual tenants who reside in those buildings, from what I understand.
Well, yeah, if they, you could do, I know the way our parking situation works at my office is depending on what your status is, like, if you're supposed to be during their, during the daytime, you have a certain color that goes on to your windshield and you're there from eight until whatever. And then if you have overnight or extended hours, you have a different color.
Yeah. And one of the issues that the chief gave, and he, he fully admitted that they had given a couple, a couple extra stickers to businesses because what was happening was is they were giving parking tickets and the businesses are coming down and saying, you gave us a parking ticket. We have to be here early in the morning to prep things, things like that was the issue we were running into. So the chief was then voiding tickets, which is, again, it was just more work we're creating on ourselves essentially. So we're, we're just trying to find out a better system to make it all work down there for everybody. So. Yeah. So just a quick building code ordinance update for the board. The planning board met on December 23rd. They did move the three ordinances forward. So there will be a public hearing on January 13th for the building code, the housing ordinance and the citation authority.
What time?
I'll start at 6:30. And that'll be over Zoom. I wanted to give everybody a quick town meeting 2021 calendar update, basically. I wanted to give everybody a quick town meeting 2021 calendar update. Basically, this is just so you kinda have an idea of where we're at and when we need to get things done. At our next meeting, I believe CIP will be presenting their recommendations. The Budget Advisory Committee also will be appearing before the board to let you know any recommendations that they have. We really should take the warrant up at that point as well because the public hearing is supposed to be February 2nd in order to get it in. So I don't know if the board wants to have a second, a, a, another meeting in January to really hit this warrant, it's up to the board on how they wanna proceed with it, or if they wanna try to tackle it all on the 19th.
I think you need a, I think you need a separate budget one.
Yeah, we need to be able to digest the, what's coming from the budget committee, you know, they might have some really great ideas that we wanna toss around and go through the numbers based on what's presented to see what's viable.
So does January 26th, be the following Tuesday, work for everybody?
That was me.
Works for me.
Works for me.
Okay, so I'll, I'll schedule that meeting to really get all the budget information so that you can get digested before the public hearing on everything. On the January 19th meeting, our auditing company is gonna be coming in for giving a presentation to give you the results of the audit. I did include those in your package, you can kinda see the paperwork behind the audit, but he's gonna come in and do a formal presentation for you, the board. So if you have questions, that'll be a great opportunity if you wanna take a look at the audit and bring those to the meeting. Tax bills were mailed out.
Would you mind, would you mind going over each page of that audit for me so I can get an idea what it's, I'm only kidding. I don't know, but it studied it, 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 I was blind by the end of it, reading it.
It's, it's a very, it's a very thorough and detailed report, that's for sure, yeah. But.
It's kind of a matter from their point of view.
I had a question about that though, Joe. Does the school budget come into this?
Into the audit?
Yeah.
Or the audit's just the town finances?
Yeah, they had their own separate audit, audits that occur in, they start in June.
Yeah, I'm just curious because it's so much more money than we have. That's kind of interesting.
Yeah, no, we, we, they do their own audit, we do our own audit. So. Tax bills, sorry.
In the previous selectmen's meeting, Joe, there was a question discussed about how long this outfit has been doing the audit. It far exceeds the five years that some people believe should be the rate that audit firms cycle through an organization. Have you given any more consideration for that?
So it is, if you talk to the DRA, the DRA does recommend every five years at least putting out a bid. If you're happy with your audit, they're saying it's okay to stay with them, but you should at least be putting it out to look at other proposals. And the other suggestion is, you know, depending on the size of the firm, is if you do keep the same firm, switch up who's doing the audit, have a different auditor come in to look at the books as opposed to always having the same person come in and do it. So this is my first kinda runaround with the audit. This is my first year and I'm kinda really diving into it now. And like you said, this company's been used for a very long time, as far as I know.
And it's the same person that's been here, so there's been a relationship built and I, you know, to really get a clear audit, I think you need to separate that relationship.
So for the 2020 year, if the board would like me to, I'm happy to put an RFP out for the audit and we can see what comes back if that's the board's directive.
I think it's a good idea.
Same here.
And then, so tax bills, we're due on December 28th, just wanted to let you guys, everybody know, we, we billed 7,500, yeah, 7.5 essentially of this tax cycle. We have about 123,000 still outstanding, which means we collected just over 92% so far of the taxes. And then finally, just an Azalea Park update, I know I, I believe I sent an email to the board, but just to make everybody aware, we did receive the repayment from the Azalea Park arm grant. So that has been situated and closed on our books.
Good work, Scott.
So there's a lot more work to do down there.
Anything else, Joe?
That is all I have, sir.
All right, Selectman reports, Scott.
I, I have nothing to report.
Leon?
I told you last time, the road management committee is requesting the 750 appropriation for the expendable trust fund. That's about it.
Peter?
Nothing.
Tia?
I have capital improvement committee meeting on Thursday. We're working to finalize that report so we can present to the planning board at their next upcoming meeting and then following that meeting, present to you.
Gonna return all the capital reserve funds to where they should be?
I'm not gonna disclose anything at this time.
All right.
I did the same thing today. Got a CIP program ready for the planning board.
Tia?
I, I'm looking at you, yeah.
I'm watching you. I'm watching you.
I think you'll be quite impressed.
Just return everything back to what it was and then if you wanna go above and beyond that, that's fine. That's all. I have no selectmen report. Okay, at this point in time, it's time for public commentary number two. Is there any members of the audience that wish to address any things that came before the board tonight or if they have any questions about other subjects? Please wave, text, whatever you can do. Tia, Joe, you seeing anything out there?
I'm not seeing any hands as of right now.
I have a question, a comment.
Yeah, go ahead, Peter.
Okay, I, I just wanna mention the fact that we, we, we got a report on expenditures, which I think we asked for our last meeting or meeting two ago, and I, I really like the format and the way it is, but I think that in 2021, from, let's say, June 1st on, the last second, six months of the year, I'd like to see this report at least once a month rather than wait till the end of the year.
Well, Lea, Peter, we should be getting this at least once a month, if not bi-weekly. This should be easy to pump out every time checks are issued so we can see where things stand, but if we're getting it at least on a monthly, you know, cycle, we can keep up with things and we can start analyzing and start projecting out, you know, how much money's being spent, how much might be left at the end of the year. Like right now, we really have no clue.
We, we have a clue by this report what's left.
Right, but he doesn't have a final number or incurred amount, so.
That's what I mean. I like, I like this, this is a nice report. I like to get this every month, at least. You're right, every two weeks would be nice too, but at least every month starting the second half of the year. That's just a suggestion to Joe. I'm not making a motion or anything, but I hope that's can be done. It should be easy, as Tia said. I think it's a matter of just pressing a few buttons.
Okay.
I don't mean nerve buttons, I mean key buttons.
All right. Has any audience members popped up with anything?
No, sir.
All right, are we doing any non-public or we good?
I think you're good tonight. Oh, okay.
Leon?
I just had a question, and I should have thought about it when we were talking about the audit. We had a discussion about what the split should be on the wastewater bond. And I can't remember whether we ended up at 60, 40. I thought we did.
Yeah.
There's a comment in here that the, that was put in by somebody that it's gonna be a 70, 30 split. Page 72 of the audit report.
Every, everything that I've seen for documentation and based on our review last year, based on what CIP has been provided and based on the presentation from wastewater, it's being recommended at 60, 40.
I'm sorry, I'll pass that on to Russ.
Yep.
All right, Scott, you had your hand up too. Go ahead, Scott.
We on non-public?
No, not yet.
Okay.
Did you have general conversation?
I had a conversation with some county employees, I just wanted to bring to our attention and see what's going on.
Okay, so I guess we will go into non-public then, right, Joe?
That is correct.
All right, at this point in the evening, we will go into non-public procession 91A colon three. Chris, yes?
Yeah, yes.
Peter?
Regarding personnel legal or what?
Personnel.
Personnel.
Yes.
Leon?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
All right, thank you all for attending this evening. Appreciate it, folks. Have a good night.
Joe, reminder, you're broadcasting.
Yep, thank you for reminding me.
That's a good call to you.
Hold on, we, we still have people in here. Yep.
Do we wanna go to another Zoom meeting or is this okay?
Nope, I'm just gonna remove the people who are still here.
Thank you, roll call, yes, 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 yes. Okay, and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Yeah, and Joe, just, oh, and before we adjourn, I sent you all the, the no discretionary easement paperwork to sign off on because we approved the GOS thing, so just need you to go in your emails and sign off.
All right, thank you.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Yep.
Tia, a second, all in all favor.
Aye, 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 aye.
Bye, guys.
Thanks, guys. Have a good one.